All the order, roll call please. Chris Dilbert?
Here.
Amy Jones, here. Lucy Nolan-Dobert, here. Rob Pennell?
Present.
Johnnie Brasek, here. Craig Sims?
Here.
Rachel Witzel is here. Okay, and stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, public hearings, we have none tonight. Approval of the agenda, I do have an addition. I overlooked the fact that we did not approve McComb Automotive, we tabled it last month. I thought we had approved it. So, we need to vote on these special land use for McComb Auto, which is going to have to come before that item. So, it will be Item C, making the site plan Item D, and Maritime Real Property, E.
I'm sorry, where's it going?
It's going to come prior to McComb Automotive's preliminary site plan.
Oh.
Letter C.
Oh, I got it. Seven C.
That's a new C.
Old business?
Yes. Okay. Is there any other?
Motion to approve is amended.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Any public comments on agenda items?
Hello, Bill Gregg. I had followed by Penbrook. Something I'm gonna have tonight is gonna be on the election of officers. I have somewhat a reason why we're having an election of officers. I was at the last City Commission meeting, and they talked about reimbursement for the chair. It was not approved. Excuse me, and I understand why. But I'm a little concerned about how much the chair is actually doing, from what I heard from the president. No offense to Dave, because I don't know. What your deal was, that kind of worked out with the council. But it seems to me that you're doing a whole lot more than I think you should be doing. Been a planning commissioner for 11 years, and that person is the chair. They commend you to chair the meetings. Having to be anything else seems to be not your job. So, I can understand why you're looking for some kind of reimbursement. But if there's that much work going on, then I think the village council needs to go back and relook at that contract and get more time out of the planner. So, that person could take care of the work that needs to be done. Except as the chair, commend your thing, chair the meeting, and then you're done.
I am going to address this at this time, just because I don't think that's fair. Dave gives us one very solid day per week, which is what we contracted for. And he works from the beginning to the end in addition to giving us a lot of extra time. However, since we've had Dave, we have brought in a lot of other things that, working with Co., working together as a team. Okay, so it is clear from the last meeting that that's not what's wanted. So, it won't be done anymore.
Like you said, I have nothing against Dave.
But Dave does fulfill his obligations.
Right. And maybe the outpatient needs to be given more time and more by the council.
No, he's fulfilling his obligations still.
Because, like you said, most of the time I see the chair doesn't attend extra meetings. Come in, you chair this meeting, and you're in your own way. So, but that's my comment today.
Thank you. I'm gonna say no, we look for a go. Any other public comments on agenda items? Approval of the minutes. So, we have a bunch here. Special meeting, September 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion on the first one?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. McComb Auto, public hearing, dated September 2nd, 2025.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Craig, second if I may. Deloitte, at our real estate public hearing, September 2nd, 2025.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Regular meeting minutes, dated September 2nd, 2025.
So move.
Second.
And then, just the one correction that I pointed out. All in favor? And that was a spelling correction, just for the record. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, communications correspondence workshop. I will take the opportunity to say that Rite Aid, we did confirm that Rite Aid was sold. So, that is no longer on our...
Resold.
Resold to the Extra Credit Union. And so, anything that they had already submitted, we pulled from our agendas. Old business. So, we have Wise Buys Parcel 2606-33476003, located at 57530 Grashit. And we need to determine the zoning still on this. So, everyone should have received an opinion from Dave and an opinion from our attorney. Is everyone in receipt of those two items? Okay, so the recommendation from both of them is that we consider them in a similar zoning to new and used autos. That's what they come closest to. So, I'll show it. Dave, you wanna speak on that?
Yeah, common practice. Rental business for me, or rental, I can talk about not matching anywhere in the ordinance. The first step we should be doing is see what district it falls in. Doesn't fall in matching anywhere in any district. So, the next step is to take the district it's in, and the planning commission has the authority, based on the local ordinance, to make a determination, is this close to another use? So then, we were asked, at that point at the last meeting, we were asked to look into that by the commission. Both the attorney and I looked at this separately. We both came up with the same thought and same recommendation that this use is similar to what's called outdoor sales for used or new auto sales. I have very similar characteristics, and it can be classified as a special land use. And at that point, it must follow all the same design requirements as an auto sales business. And that, like you say, it came from the attorney and us.
Did anybody have any questions for you? Do we want to determine, make a motion to determine zoning on this parcel?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second for that?
Can you explain your...
I'll make a second for the conversation.
What are you making your motion to deny?
I mean, I read it. I don't think that's a place for to have that special land use tucked in between those two businesses.
Is there a second for that? Or there is a second, so...
So, your motion is to deny the special land use?
Correct.
Okay, so we're determining zoning. We're determining how we're gonna classify the special land use. And I said zoning, I probably shouldn't have said zoning. How we're gonna classify the special land use. So, we're gonna classify the special land use as a new and used auto sales.
Oh, so we're not actually talking about that? Properly, we're talking about his...
Correct. We have to classify them to move forward with it. So, to move forward with... So, they're entitled to their public hearing. They've come in. We need to know how they're being classified for the purpose of...
I'm with Threlman.
All with Threlman, second. Okay, so do we have a motion on the table to classify the special land use as new and used auto sales?
So move.
Second? Okay, I'll roll call on that.
I'm a little confused here. So, are we changing the zoning designation?
So, okay. Wise Buys doesn't fit. Wise Buys means a special land use.
Yes.
So, we're basically... We don't have anything in our ordinances that defines U-Haul sales. So, we had to either...
Rentals.
Rentals.
U-Hauls, rentals.
Anything.
Yes, any type of rental. So, we don't have that in our ordinances. We don't have a classification for them. So, we have two choices, which is come to the closest thing that we have in our ordinances that already exists, which is the new and used auto sales or rewriting an ordinance specifically for them.
So, my question is, are we changing the zoning?
No.
Or not changing the zoning?
No, it's my bad on that. We are...
Because that's what Dave says, zoning.
Yes, I said my bad on that. We are determining their classification.
So, McComb Auto is zoned as general business or something of that nature?
Let me try to clarify it.
Please.
You guys, actually, the planning commission has two options for it right now. One is they can look at the memos that myself and Mr. Yules wrote and determine that it's production using zoning, determines a special land use within a GB general business district. The other option you have is to say no, moderate the ordinance, we don't think it should be there. Then you would... Then to say you're just gonna... I guess make a motion that we might look at the ordinance again and rewrite it. So, it's two options.
And so, the motion that's on the table right now is...
To change... To create... To put them under the classification of new and used autos.
Okay, okay.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? You good? Okay. So, we were roll call. Yes. Rob Pennell?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan-Dobert?
Yes.
Amy Jones?
Yes.
Johnnie Brasek?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
And Rachel Witzel is yes. Okay, sorry for the confusion. Okay, so Wise Buys, Item B. Wise Buys Parcel 2606-33476003 at 57530 Grashit. Set the public hearing for special land use. Again, on determined zoning, on determined classification, I'm sorry, of new and used auto sales.
Motion to set the public hearing for member four? Seven, all six, three.
We can probably use that to do it during...
You're ready to do that? Okay. Seven, PM.
Yeah. Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Item C, McComb Automotive, special land use. So, we tabled this last month. Based on a lack of information, I don't know that we're any further ahead on that. Is there any?
We didn't get any updates. I was...
No, thanks. So, everything is as it was last month. Is there anyone here from McComb Auto?
Yes.
Would you like to speak on that?
Ben Tiscio, Tiscio Architects, the Monarchion. I'm also here with the owner. I guess I'm a little bit confused about what's required. I submitted the application with drawings, documentation for the site plan approval. And I'm there hearing that some additional information is required. I never received a notice that I needed more information.
I will let our planner and our engineer both speak to you on that. Dave, first.
Did you get a review? If you get a copy of our review that we wrote?
Yes, I did, and I replied to it. And that, our engineering drawings are being prepared. And I believe we responded to all the items on the agenda, on the list. Let me get my...
I did not receive anything. I mean, response back.
We haven't received anything since July. Right, we haven't received anything, and I...
When was your last correspondence?
My last correspondence was the submitted.
And what was the date on that?
The drawings were dated July 15th.
That's the same original.
And did you respond to any fact that you got from that?
I thought we did, but I'm looking through the binder, and I don't see actual replies. We did get... And I don't recall seeing comments. Were they from the consultants?
Yes. I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was saying, but it was Becky. Building department went up for it.
Yes. They would've came from our building department. Did yours go directly or to Becky?
Yeah, we sent everything back to the building.
It would've come from Hollis, our Hollis.
Again, I don't have anything in the... I, we did make some comments.
Would you like to share with us your comments now?
If I may, yes. What I have here is... I don't have a... Yes, it looks like this was part of the August 18th letter. And it had some comments with special land use. Appeared to be two pages. In fact, it's documented.
I wrote it August 18th, and it should be dated. You might let her...
Mine says August 18th. From Tri-County Engineering.
I have a... Yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh.
Have you responded to that letter?
Yes, that was the response.
So, the response says all our comments do not apply. And in our letter, we cannot waive anything. If the applicant feels like it does not apply, they have to go to council. We only state the ordinance and the requirements. So, we did not get any updates on the plans or not address, you know, our comments or Dave's comments. It's just, the letter simply said it does not apply.
Well, it doesn't... In some cases, it does not apply. In some cases, there was some discussion. My apologies, I guess my staff didn't put that letter in this...
That's okay.
Could we go to that...
Refriger?
Yes. So, can we start at the beginning, please, sir?
Sure.
There's no site or building work that's proposed with the existing condition of the... So, there's no change, it couldn't happen to the building. That's remained the same.
So, let me clarify this.
Yes.
What... The site is existing with a building and some parking.
Correct.
That's one parcel.
That's right.
To the north.
Yes, and then the south, I guess, was purchased by the owner?
The south parcel, which is empty, purchased by the owner and used as a part now. Okay?
Yes.
So, in your proposal, which you show here?
Yes.
You're converting the whole thing into a dealer.
Correct.
The existing part, which you have, the existing building?
Yes.
It does not comply with current standards?
The building itself?
The whole site.
In what respect?
All the items that we listed in our letter. So, I can go through it.
I guess I'd like to go through that because there's nothing about the building other than it talked about general water main, sanitaries, who were paving, grading drainage.
We're not talking about the...
Landscaping, correct?
We're talking about site. The civil and engineering, we addressed the site only. Dave addresses the zoning. And then, on the second stage, which you go to building, that's when fire and building...
Correct.
You, the actual building. We don't get involved with building at this stage. This is a site plan only.
That is correct. And that's why we're not addressing the building?
So, yeah, we're not talking about building.
Okay, thank you.
But in your letter, saying that all the items listed in our review letter dated August 18th, it does not apply. Because your letter says no site improvements are proposed or required.
I wondered if we had the wrong letter through the wrong process. That's why...
You're on the wrong site. We're in the way. I, my apologies. So, I don't have a reply from you on McComb Auto?
I guess, I'm a little confused as to then why are we having to call for the hearing? Because usually, if there are comments, I will attend the planning commission hearing and put forth my comments. And that's what I thought we were here for.
So, our letter, again, that was issued...
On the 18th?
August 15th.
Yes.
And the planning letter was issued...
19th.
On the 19th.
Yeah, I think that the biggest issue that we're here to discuss is the actual paving area.
That's one of the issues.
That we were... And I guess one of the other issues other than the stormwater retention...
Stormwater.
Which we are gonna be having. It looks like we did not have our revised drawing. We are proposing to have a stormwater retention. Cyanac Oziac is working on some of the preliminary engineering right now to accomplish that.
So, this is the site plan that we got, July 15th. We never received any updates after that.
Okay. All right. So, but we are gonna be having stormwater retention on the property in the form of an open detention pocket. And obviously, added catch spaces.
Open detention?
Open detention.
The whole site is paved? Where are we gonna put the detention?
And it's gonna go on the south side of the property. Cyanac Oziac is looking at the area that has been required. If we need some preliminary calculations, then let's table this and then get you the preliminary calculations.
I don't understand where you're gonna put it because this is your property line.
Well, okay, my apologies. The north there, or really, Grashit, we're saying is gonna run north and south. So, in this north there, it'll be on the west side.
Somewhere here?
No, no, on the west side.
On here?
No, that west side of the property. Just off, on the neighborhood, on the west side, there.
Here. Here. Let me do it right there. Okay.
Right there. Where the verb is now.
So, currently, we don't have that info.
I, my apologies, I thought this was sent to you.
Madam Chair. So, we do have a request before us for special land use, which was requested. And hence why it's on the agenda. So, we did table that last month because we don't have enough information to determine the special land use request. We need it more. So... But when the request is made for a special land use, we put it on our next agenda.
Okay. Let me, if I may, address that.
Yes.
The reason I'm not prepared for this meeting today is we told you we're not having a meeting. And today, about 1:00, I got a note that we have a hearing on both these properties today. I only was notified today at about 1:00. And we, in the middle of preparing revised documents, we were gonna be submitting them.
Were you aware that you were on the agenda last month for special land use?
No, I was not. I was made aware today about 1:00 via an email that we were on the agenda. I had planned for tonight, but I didn't know that because I needed to hear. So, I asked then that we tabled these before. This project, if we can deal with special land use, fine.
Okay.
And then, come back at the next day when I have answers to everything. And I still deserve that opportunity to actually look at the preliminary engineering to address some of these. And that's why I'm surprised that we're getting into this kind of detail. My apologies, I thought we were only here for the special land use discussion.
Well, we do have to discuss that.
Yes. But again, I wasn't...
But I don't think we're really... Are, has anything changed for the information that we had to determine that this month? Or...
Hey, we didn't receive any response to our zoning letters.
Correct.
So, right now, I'm gonna rely on my August 19th letter because I did last month.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, it really, it doesn't make any difference.
We can table it again.
Because we still have... Some requirements are not shown. And this gentleman's saying that we're working on it. We can go over the comments, if you like. You have a copy of our letter.
Yes, I have.
So, you know what the expectancy from this...
Correct.
See on the site plan.
Right.
So, at this time, we don't have an updated site plan to present to the commissioners.
I agree. And that's good.
And our letters were issued a month ago.
Yes.
And we've been working on it. Okay.
Okay, so, in regards to special land use, is there a motion?
Motion to table to the next meeting.
For.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call. Rob Pennell?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan-Dobert?
Yes.
Johnnie Brasek?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
No.
Amy Jones?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
And Rachel Witzel is yes. Okay, and then our next item on the agenda is McComb Auto, Parcel 2606-33276035 and 2606-33276038, located at 58025 Grashit, preliminary site plan. Is, would we like to discuss this further? Or would you like to make a motion?
Like to make a motion to table.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
So, I'll have you correspond with both our engineer and...
Right, and we will get that to you, I would hope, by early next week.
Thank you.
My apologies, I wasn't aware that this was going on. And if I could please get notice, you know, some days before, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Maritime Real Property Parcel 2606-33... 326009, 58359, Lane Street, preliminary site plan. So, we did vote on this once. Is there anyone here from Maritime?
Yeah.
So, we did vote on this item once and denied it at the... So, we did vote on this item once and denied it at that time. They did resubmit, I believe, within like a couple days of that denial, with some changes, or a change that they had made. So, you should all have the new plans, either write an email or write a bill. There's a hard copy. I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Becky Klein. I'm with PDA Group in Washington Township. Here on behalf of the owner who could not be here this evening. I would like to say I had a similar experience to Ben DeZao. I was only made aware of this meeting today at 1:00. And I spoke to Becky about it, which she said is the policy of building department is to post the agenda on the door and on their website. And otherwise, they don't make any notice. You can't sort the owners of these things. So, I suspect they're going to continue to have stories like this. And people miss in meetings because they're not getting noticed in the face.
We did discuss it, and I should share that one with you here, we did discuss it today, that going forward, when the agendas are posted, we will.
It would be very helpful. I very much appreciate that myself. So just a little introduction, this is a property that has been operated more or less continuously as some kind of industrial storage yard. Since the old steel mill was shut down in the late eighties, I believe. I did a little research, just looking through some historical imagery. And the use of the property has remained pretty consistent since that time. So it's basically a big gravel area accessed from a long, you know, driveway off of Main Street, right next to the railroad tracks. When you drive through town, you really can't see it. If you see anything, what you see is the steel lay down yard for Shoreline Steel, which has property basically right in front of this one. Off on the east is a large undeveloped green. He's a property on the south, you have the same thing. On the west, you've got the railroad, and on the other side of that, you have the landfill. So, the reason we're actually here is because the property owner who started purchasing this property, I think about five years ago, completed his land contract, recorded the warranty he did, and that triggered a review by the various agencies here at New Haven. And then it was discovered that he had never obtained a COO for the property. So we're engaged in this process in order to try to bring the property close enough into compliance that he granted a certificate of occupancy. So, this is not an occupied property, which no, having a lot of good buildings on it of any kind. It is used for an industrial business, but it is not accessible by the public. He's using it as a storage yard to support his marine business. He operates a couple of marinas and maritime businesses, and this is where it keeps his equipment. So, we have, through the various negotiations, come back with offering some improvements up on Main Street. We know that that approach has been an issue, and we're going to place that old approach with a new concrete apron. We did the sidewalk in front, so it's walkable and safe for the community. Get some landscaping up there by the entry where it can be seen, make it a little nicer for the community. But again, this is, it's still an industrial property. It's a shared access drive with Shoreline Steel, so they're bringing big trucks in and out of there every day as well. So it really didn't make a lot of sense to try to pave that whole roadway. It would be cost prohibitive to try to bring in that much concrete. So we've asked for a waiver for having to put a hard surface on there. We do want to replace, you know, about the last 75 feet of gravel, make sure that is very strong and compacted. And that will help keep Main Street clean of rocks and debris. So, it does represent, I think, a pretty substantial improvement. But we have asked for waivers on some of the other ordinance requirements, just so we can continue operating the site as it has done. And we have to answer questions regarding any engineering items or anything that you guys have to want discussed.
Does anybody have any questions at this time?
I do have a comment that, that that length of property there, that if we grant you what you're asking, it's going to continue to look the way it looks, and it's going to be there. It's approved, it's the way it'll be. The village would like to redevelop that property to the left, so. It'd be better if that area is something more, and when that happens, I don't know.
Yeah, you mean on the other side of the railroad tracks?
Sure.
Where the old landfill was? Yeah, and, and we're willing to commit to coming in and putting in landscaping. We can, if, if and when those properties get developed, we'd be willing to come out, remove any of the old Russian trees that have grown up, and put in a new buffer strip with landscaping per the ordinance, when those developments happen. If that's, if that would be feasible.
I guess if we're approving this, you would have to do it now. We don't normally say, hey, come back later and do stuff.
Yeah.
Plus, for that property, to the other side of it, to be looked at by a developer, and it looks the way it looks, I think they just draw.
Yeah. The other thing is, we've got some dimensional issues there. I mean, up near the entry, it's a fairly wide piece of property up there. He's got 100 feet of frontage. But when it narrows down to where it's just a roadway, there's barely enough room just to put the pavement surface in there. And in fact, most of the buffering that occurs is actually in the GTRR driveway. It's plants and trees that have grown up in the easement area. And it's not actually stuff we can touch. So, again, just from a feasibility standpoint, if you want us to, you could put more landscaping up at the entrance. But that narrow portion of land, we just don't have enough room to put it and still maintain a correct way.
Have you submitted your requests for waivers to the building department?
Yes.
Are you on the next council or jump out?
I am not aware that we are.
No. So, you're aware that we denied you?
Yes, when we were denied, I was not under contract to represent Mr. Alderman at these meetings.
Okay.
And I believe he missed that hearing, so there was nobody here to speak on behalf of the property and attempt any negotiations.
So, if you're seeking waivers, we have to deny you. And then you, am I accurate in that? Yes, sorry, my bad. Yeah, I'm sorry. Turn this way. So if you're seeking waivers, we have to deny you.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have to seek the waivers and come back with the either waiver approval.
Okay.
Oh, so, in our denial, it was ours, that you were seeking waivers. And so, then you brought back the new site plan.
Right.
So you're back here.
Right.
So we have to deny you again.
Okay, well, I was not aware when the initial denial was made that we needed to get the waivers on board before applying to you. So that, that process is done fully through building department?
To ask to be on.
To get the waivers.
To request the waivers?
Yeah.
You have to go to council for waivers.
Okay.
So you would make your submission to building, and then they would forward them to our clerk.
I apologize, I did just find it was buried with another email, the waivers with the site plan approval application.
Right, right, so I, I'm a little confused, I guess, as to process.
So yes, we have to deny you here for you to get the waivers.
So what do I need to do after this denial to get on?
I'll put it on next week's. Are you available next Tuesday to come to the council?
Same time?
Yep.
I will be here.
Okay, I'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay. All right. Any, anything else I can say?
Did you have any?
I know, I just sent, I did have updated, I emailed Becky updated the last plan. So I have a few comments that we should probably go for right now.
Okay.
First one is, there was a note on sheet C-2.1 states of preliminary landscaping, or HI zoning district is not required, that not applicable to state, because it's a outdoor store, it's a landscaping area.
Right.
Second is, our site plan proposes using natural tree line on the north, south, and west. At the embossance tree line is an adjacent parcel instead of putting in the required green belt. We're okay with this, but we might have conditions placed. The planning commission formally modifies the requirement. Green belt provided per ordinance is put in if the commission ever, or city or village ever determines that the existing tree line got removed because it's not adjacent property or it's old or inadequate at that point. We also ask that the street punished landscaping is done based on this comment tonight. Is it really appropriate for the area? We are trying to jumpstart the downtown and the area between Grasset all the way down to downtown. And I don't subscribe to the waiting C proposal things yet. We gotta make some moves and jumpstart it, so I think it should be put in as part of this approval. And finally, you provide a whole metric plan, and I shoot through the exterior lights, you provide a whole metric plan for, but it don't have the site landscaping throughout the exterior lights, one or the other.
Yeah, and, and I had responded to your letter, and there was a recent little set.
Another one?
Given to Becky.
Okay. But that's not a copy. There weren't big copies.
Yeah, yeah, we are not planning on putting any lighting in.
Okay.
That note has been added to the plan.
Beautiful.
We corrected the incorrect note about the landscaping.
My comment goes on that.
But all of, everything, just, I want to just make this, it goes to council, then comes back to us again, once waivers are. Assuming they're granted.
Yes.
Approved or denied.
Right.
Yes.
Fire has denied this sometime as well.
I'm sorry, pardon me?
Fire has denied this site plan as well. And has not received any updates since, since March 23rd of this year.
And there is no process, I will share with you, there is no process for fire. You have to fight with the fire.
Right, okay, I had understood that David had met with you or someone from the fire department and worked through the concerns that you have against the culprit, I'm sorry.
We haven't seen anything on paper.
What do you need to see?
The roadway needs to be able to support the village fire department apparatus. This is a park consulting.
Right, right, and we had seen that, and my understanding is that those issues and all that resulted.
We haven't received anything on paper, but they will split laws.
Okay. So.
Do you have that email? Do you have a copy of that?
I have a copy of that. I already looked at it.
We have met with, I'm sorry, I forget his name.
Dave Alderman.
Alderman, yeah, we've met with Alderman a couple times, fire sector's gone out there. And we've discussed some things, and we're still.
Yeah, there's one hydrant back there, there's no way that's going to reach 400 feet to the entire perimeter of the storage yard back there, which would mean we have to extend the water main in order to stop the hydrants. Honestly, I think that might be a deal killer for this. Regarding the, support of the village fire department apparatus, I mean, I know they work in heavy equipment through there all the time, tractors and cranes. What are you looking for? Geotechnical studies, any minimal support of 5,000 pounds, or?
Can I jump in now? Okay, so, let me back up.
Sure.
The process here, use of the site plan.
Yep.
It does not comply with current standards. And you, you are contesting some standards are not applicable. Again, as explained to the applicant before you, the planning commission or the consultants don't have that authority to waive any of these requirements. So basically, the site needs to pave all parking areas.
Okay.
Pave the driveway.
Where we have the city council's appointment.
Storm sewers and detention ponds, and fire department requirements. So what happened is, planning commission, they denied the site plan. And if you feel strongly that council will agree with you, you may go to council for approval. Again, your waiver request cannot be based on cost. Cost is not.
It's not your choice.
A hardship.
Right.
And we've seen your reply about the nature of the business and the heavy equipment and all that. We agreed to some of them, and we don't agree to some, some other ones. So, that's, totally your choice to go to council for waivers of any of these requirements. Okay? Now, going back to when, we cannot trump the fire code.
I understand.
It's up to the fire department to agree to your request or not. And they will recommend those findings with consequence, you go and ask for a waiver on the 20-foot wide fire apparatus access, hydrant being 40 feet from, you know, all parts of, of the storage, you know, the gateway and the turnaround. So all those needs to go to council. Now, they do look at safety first, not just, not just ordinance.
I think we can meet all of those requirements, just, you know, depending on what it is that would be sufficient evidence that definitely support the wait. I mean, there's sufficient room for a fire truck to get in there. I can sketch out a turnaround for it easily enough, there's plenty of room for that. Only real issue I see is giving enough height and sound to the comfortable site.
So part of the site plan requirement is a simulation of fire truck access and turnaround and leaving. So geometry got to work with the template. Template is available on site, on the website. And also, the two parts of the fire department access is the actual pavement itself. So, we, if council approves the gravel, we would, we would want to see a geotechnical engineering design of the gravel paper.
Okay.
Not the civil. And also, for the, for the temporary turnaround, for the fire code, I think there's a maximum length before you need to provide a turnaround. A T or a cul-de-sac or whatever. And that driveway is very long, I think it's about 1,000 feet, over 1,000 feet, so.
And we'll work with you on the hydrant and that turnaround, because there are, if maintained, you know, Shoreline Steel operates the property. That gate, is that Shoreline's or is that Maritime's?
It would be Maritime's, the gate we're planning on putting in. He wants to just protect his materials that are stored back on his ground.
Before, so it's going to be after the gate that's existing?
Right, right, there won't be a gate on, on Main Street, it would just be back there.
But there's a gate there now.
Is, okay.
So that's, that's the gate I guess I'm talking about. Is that Maritime's?
It's owned by Maritime.
So the gate is Maritime's, they're going to put in another gate.
Correct.
Because I don't think that gate is the width.
It doesn't.
I think it's only like 14 feet. Right, so that would have to be adjusted as well. Because I think in the original plan, there was no gate.
It said 13.
13 feet. So the original plan, then, there was, we never seen a gate, so.
Yeah, a, a, a normal driveway for fire is 26 feet wide minimum. So right now, you're riding half of that. Again, that's up to the fire.
Right, next stop, we'll work.
Okay.
So, did you get a copy of all of our letters?
I did.
Then the, the waivers that, that we've listed.
Right.
The parking lot, the curb and gutter, the pavement way, and the storm collection detention. So those, those are the engineering that you're asking for.
Right.
Your updated plans did show some driveway approval.
Yes.
But not full approval. Again, we can only cite the requirements. Council, it's basically said all, the entire driveway needs to be paved.
Right. And I think the ordinance would require the entire storage lot to be paved. If we go straight by the ordinance.
So what they propose is just, just this area right to the front to be paved. This area.
Right.
Side walk and open. The entire remaining area, they are proposing to stay remaining as gravel. Again, that's, that's up to council to agree or not.
Right.
And then, in the order that we listed, it's, it's basically the first one that council needs to approve is parking area, paving, and curragen, because that will trigger the storm requirements. If they don't agree to it, then you have to provide detention.
Right.
If council agreed to gravel, then in your, in your plans, you need to demonstrate that you're not increasing any runoff, and we will accept that.
Right.
Trying to explain the process. Once you're approved by council for all these waivers, you come back to planning, final site plan approval. Once that's done, then you go to building for final construction.
Okay, got it.
All right, anybody from the table? Is a straight denial sufficient, or do we need to list waivers?
I think they have them.
Okay.
Basically.
Do we have to deny it or do we table it?
Denial.
Denial.
Okay.
Site plan shows you're only paving a sidewalk forward to Main Street, is that correct?
Yeah, we were proposing to put in a new approach, basically, in the right way.
And then there's a note on here that says scrape and sweep daily, all dirt and mud trapped on to all existing paved areas adjacent to proposed earth disruption.
That's a soil erosion note for during construction, while construction is ongoing, you have to keep the adjacent railways clean, so that's a standard note for that.
Yeah, I just, I don't see that's even gonna happen daily.
I'm not reading side of my code.
So it's just up to the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk to Main is all they're paying. I mean, if you were to say, hey, we would do 40 feet or so into it, I'd be okay with that.
I'd like to see it to the gate, personally.
But, just to say you're going to go from the sidewalk to Main Street at 10 feet is ridiculous, to tell you the truth, yeah.
Well, I think to say if she's seeking waivers, yeah, that's up to council.
I know, I'm just putting it on the record that it's not anywhere sufficient to what should be done, because that's not gonna stop all that mud and dirt, I don't care how much gravel is put on there, and how hard you pack it, it's not gonna stop.
Right, that's why we're planning on, we're hogging out and replacing that first 75 feet of the roadway with new compacted road aggregate, which will be a lot more resistant to wear and mud than what's there currently.
And what's gonna happen with all the water that's running off.
It should run off the way it does currently.
Well, that's part of the problem. It's part of the problem, it's washing it all into the street, onto the sidewalk into the street, and it's gonna continue to do that, no matter what aggregate you put on there.
Right.
Currently, between the sidewalk and Main Street, it's not paved, right?
I agree with you, great for the property, it's not for us, but it is for council, it should be paved in some capacity, at least the gates, the back gates.
Sure.
How far in the first gate back?
It's about 500 feet, I think, it's pretty long. I think that total length of property is, yeah, it's just over, it's almost 10, 50 feet all the way back, so down to that first gate is around 400, 450 feet.
Mr. Dave, what are you talking about, the first gate?
The, yeah, the gate would be where that line of trees is.
Yeah, but there's a gate right by that building, I think that's what Mr. David was saying.
Yes, yes, that very first gate that...
Right. That's the gate that you're referring to, who owns that gate, is shoreline or is maritime?
That's about 350 square to the first building.
Okay.
I think, I will share this, is eventually, who knows when, the goal is to have some development down there.
Sure.
Okay, and this property could stay as it is, going forward forever.
Right.
You know, so, to have adjacent property that is butted up against something that has erosion, that has these problems of drainage, to have this aesthetic, isn't exactly ideal.
Right.
That's why there are ordinance for development.
What's that?
That's why we have ordinance for development.
Correct. So, does anybody else have any comments? All right, is there a motion? Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, I'll roll call.
For the waivers of...
The waivers are out, so it's...
It's a straight.
I know, but we're denying it because of the waivers requested.
We're just denying.
Straight up deny?
It has to go back to you, so after the waivers.
Okay.
Lucy Nolan Dover? Yes?
Rachel Wilson, is it, yes, Craig Sims?
Yes.
Genevieve Radzak?
Yes.
Rob Denell?
Yes.
Amy Jones?
Yes.
And Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, I appreciate the guidance and input, and I do respect what you're trying to do for the community here, and gonna see what we can do to work through this and make something that'll keep everybody happy. Thank you.
If you wanna give your email address, I'll copy you on the agenda, I'll send you an email letting you know you're on the agenda. Okay, new business, rezoning residential to multiple family. We have two parcels before us. 260633429010, 260633429005, on Main Street, vacant property, correct?
Yes.
And then the other is 57675 Main Street. So I will let Mr. Atisha come up and discuss before we set the vote here.
Andy Atisha. So, as you have the plans, building apartments, and adding more stores towards Grashett.
Hold on just a sec, just so that, so this probably was not in our packets, because it was not...
It's just a rezon.
It's just a rezon that is in our packets, however, we should have all received Mr. Atisha's plan for the corner over the past month or so. Okay, so is everybody familiar?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so it's 28 units apartments, we tear up the old house, the first one a greenhouse, and a vacant lot. And we're adding more commercial towards Grashett. I didn't know if it's gonna be any hearing today, I just wanted to know.
We're just setting a public hearing.
Okay, it's not a public hearing, yeah?
No, no, not at all. So we were just setting it.
I don't know if you have the plan, you looked at it?
It's not on our table right now, everybody does have a copy of it that they've received, but this is the first action that we've taken towards it, is the rezon of these two parcels. You asked for the rezon, so that is why we are here today, for, why this is here today.
Okay, we want to talk about it, that's what I understand. The zoning, the first one, I understand is a single-family home, but it's multiple. Then we have the single-family home and a vacant lot. So that's what the lots are, three lots.
So, so you're, so the first one would also have to be rezoned for what you're pursuing, but currently before us, we only have the two, even though you're using it that way, that's not how it's zoned, so we have to do...
Okay, no problem with that, we can do that on application.
Okay, so, but right now, we have the two before us, so we, you would need all three, I'm assuming, for what you were proposing.
Okay, I just know today, and the hearing was today, so I just showed up to do that.
Okay.
It's no problem, then next public hearing, the architect will be with me, and we'll have the application correct.
You have to submit a new application if you want that third one, because right now, we only have two before us. If you need the third one rezoned, you need to put in another petition to rezon, that third one.
Okay, another petition? So it's gonna be all at one time?
Not the way, not the way it was submitted, no. So, if you want them all done at the same time, you would have to withdraw this and resubmit with all three.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
So you would like to withdraw this request, which means we will take it off our agenda?
It would be in November, a public hearing?
It would be December.
Oh, December is still...
So, I'll leave that up to you, but that first, if that's what you're wishing...
Well, we gotta do the whole thing complete, if it's not.
Sorry, Brian.
Is there any way that we could amend tonight to include that third parcel for the...
He filled out the petition. The petition that has the specific parcel numbers and addresses in the document that he has to. His application is for these two.
He is, nothing's been published, though, right?
He's not requesting it tonight.
Wow.
The paperwork trail does not have that third parcel as being requested. If we were, if somebody was to FOIA this...
Well, we thought it was the same zoning, it's three units and one is multiple.
Yes.
But it was old building.
Yes, but it is, it doesn't matter how you're using it, it's how it's zoned, so it's zoned.
Yes, I understand that, too.
So, and it has to follow the procedure for rezoning.
Correct, I got it, I understand.
So...
So I just, I wanted to leave together all at one time, so it's, because December, that's too long, but we can do it, you know?
Okay.
Because it's also gonna require, it's not combined, not combined, is it?
It's going to require quite a bit, yes, it would require a combine, it would require, I think, additional rezoning in, it's pulled up right now, I, does it require additional? I'm gonna let Dave speak on this.
First of all, I have one complication, in fact, it is perceived, all three of those single-family parcels and the commercial parcel, that whole site they're showing there is actually zoned, or actually master planned, for a commercial office. Because of that, we're gonna have to recommend, from a technical standpoint, we're gonna have to recommend denial or rezoning, because it's all not planned for multiple family. The one way, and we have to check, the one way that they could work on is they can come in for mixed-use planning unit development and apply for that, because you can apply it planning unit development anywhere, and there's certain criteria for mixed uses and looking at densities. I am not quite sure seeing the site plan, if the density may have to be reworked. I don't see separation of parking between the residential and commercial, so the density may have to be reworked. The PUD does require the minimum five acre site, I don't know at all, there's four properties here, I'm not quite sure right now what we all have. Because we have to take a look at that, so there's some technical items we have to look at, but that's the only avenue, the only other avenue that's we're gonna go in and work through the planning and development is, we have to either change the master plan for those parcels, that's about the only true one, and I don't think a conditional zoning may work for this, but it could be what the two most problematic ones are, changing the master plan and getting the PUD somehow. And I'm not confused everybody about this.
And I think we did the acreage, and it does fall short of the PUD requirements, yeah. I believe we did that at one of our meetings.
We could, the only other option, if we possibly try a conditional zoning to probably the GED downtown, because they allow mixed use. Again, you set conditional.
Yes. Okay.
Three, four, one, two, five parcels.
Pardon me? Yes, it's short.
Sure, three.
I guess if we could give a variance.
Yeah, that would require, yes, he would.
Give up a dimension.
That would be ZDA, right?
Yes.
So...
Okay, we'll try it again?
Would you like to meet again, to, I know you've had some meetings, or do you wanna meet again to get more guidance? Or do you wanna, I just wanna make sure you're on the right track, Dave?
Yeah, the reason I brought it up is I wanna spend, we're telling them, why are you writing reviews?
Right.
I'm gonna be recommending denial based on what's submitted.
So it's not falling within the master plan, did you follow that? So, right now, our planning is going to recommend denial because of the mixed-use nature of what you're proposing. So what would fall within our master plan is you do have the business, the general business aspect, that would fall within our master plan, but it's, stop me if I'm, stop me, but the apartments do not, so... And then the residential, I don't even know where that falls, like, do you know where that falls with the master plan? Like his, his three residential properties?
Right now, no, they don't fall in the master plan, they're being redeveloped, they would have to be redeveloped to the commercial office.
Does that commercial, does that fit right there, though, that's what I'm asking in the master plan? Do those three, if he was to, I'm just speculating here, don't, if he was to do this and this business?
It doesn't, unless you do something about planning or development, something about mixed-use development, it's the only thing that's gonna work from a traditional standpoint, with a separated land use, it's not gonna work.
I thought we wanted to do that with the architect, and it was not possible, and I was, you wanna meet again with the architect? I mean, I don't know.
Architect, architect now listens, he submitted the same, and he did not listen to one thing we said. I'm gonna be honest with you, we talked about planning and development, we talked about other things, we said, the bubble density was too high, we didn't like the idea of providing commercial and residential parking together, because you have parking charges based on both calculations. So the architect left here not following, responding to anything we asked him to.
I thought it was okay, and we came up with a plan and submitted.
No, I'm sorry.
But anyway, we can talk to him later again, I'm sure he can correct whatever it is. So, Matthew, what else, we talked about it, we set up, we were saying...
He's the man, he's, he's the one talked about something, we talked about site development. I know we talked about radiuses, you know, some sharp radiuses, some narrow, yeah, I remember those. We talked about storm attention and all that, but Dave was there, and he made those comments. I sit in my lane.
Yeah. It's no problem, we can correct it, I mean, we can give him a call, and Dave, the one should talk there, and tell him, why is that correct? If it is correction, then we don't have...
I'll be here tomorrow, if you'd like to come in.
Are we meeting again?
Tomorrow I'll be here.
Tomorrow you'll be here.
I'll be here next day, Friday.
It's no problem, I'll let him call you, and see what you have, and I, I have...
You have to walk through everything, sit down with a person, walk through everything.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay.
It's no problem, we'll do that, I just got the email today.
I don't understand.
Yeah, I got the email today, so, I emailed them.
Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, we emailed them too, we didn't know there was something wrong, and, but, he did not respond, I emailed him, he did not respond. So probably all tomorrow.
Yeah, so I was hoping to, before we went down the road, I knew what the outcome was gonna be.
Okay. So we get another here?
So that being said, would you like to formally withdraw your...
Well, we gotta do it all together, we can't just do some and do...
I need, yes, I just need you to say that.
Yes.
Okay.
I will do it all at once.
Okay.
Have any agenda to review?
No, I think we can.
Let you go through the application.
Yes. Do we, we should maybe take a motion that we accept the withdrawal.
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the rezoning application for those two parcels.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so we went through that?
Okay, we'll do that tomorrow.
Yes. Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, as already kind of shared, election of officers, at this point in time, I'm going to step down as chair, remain on the commission. And I would like to make a motion to appoint Rob as chair. Does Rob feel about that?
Should be your side.
I'm gonna do not what she did.
Okay.
I'm second half.
You're passing up on a party.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All she carried. So now we need a chair. I'm all right.
A little shake or a crack to... Okay?
Stop moving that here.
Motion for those?
Motion.
I'll have a chair.
You can do a chair, okay, it's for Genevieve Concha.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. General business, zoning districts, did everybody get a chance to review that? Email that Dave sent, should be in there, I'm not really sure. Yeah?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Dave, I'll let you go with that.
Okay, yeah, we've been working on some additions to your GB, general business district, who puts architectural design standards in there, and you can see, I took the, in my hand, in my, uh, response, I took your existing ordinance, and I just took straight through this modify language, I think should be removed, and I added language, you're seeing bold and italic in there, um, and as, you know, and I can take a couple times, I just want to kind of roughly explain and have you go back and look at it next month, come in, because I think you need to digest, I think everybody, if I saw how we need a month to digest this. Um, as you can see, is, the intent, uh, with article with five one five dash fifty, the intent of the general business district, that once, uh, kind of made it a little more robust, beefed up a little bit, and what we wanted to do is rather than just calling it a commercial corridor of commercial use, we wanted to make sure that everybody understood this is a front door to the community, and where certain expectations are architectural control, landscaping and such, because it is where everybody's gonna, kind of, yeah, these were judge veterans in both New Haven, they're gonna see the district from Brashett Avenue, not going to downtown, and it's gonna be our front door to the downtown. Uh, we did not change any permitted uses in there, and I'm looking at five point, five one five dash five one, five one five dash five two, and five one five dash five three, those are the special land uses, permitted land uses, and accessories, we did not change any of that, so not changing what, what with the district, we're just adding, let's say, criteria. Um, five one five dash five four development regulations, much of it stayed the same, we did an introductory statement in that explaining, uh, what the intent was, we did add, I want to look at GA, a bonus provision, in there, more of a carrot, if someone went, uh, went beyond what we asked for, we were allowed to do extra, um, you know, give away some per height eligibility, could be some partial reduction of eligibility, but we have to meet the criteria that's in the ordinance, not meet like four or five, it's written. Um, five one five dash five six is the all new standards for site and landscape design, is they're all new. Um, let, look at, five one five dash five seven is another set, these have to do with building design, one answer to landscaping and site design, this next one's all new criteria for building design. And then if I go to the final page, do we have a five one five dash five five access management standards, I'm not sure if the village wanted to go down that road, I did look at Lennox Township, says a crash at overlay, most of their overlay district is tied into access management, how far drive that to be apart, where they're at, curbing and things like that, I wanted to leave that, I wasn't sure if the village wanted to go down that path or not, it's quite long, and you know, so that is here, he could look at it and give us feedback into whether we need that. And that's it in a nutshell, um, and there's quite a bit here, probably, right, and then it may take us a meeting or two to walk through, we need to take section by section, and this, and it's what I put in there, if you feel, if you don't want something, that's more fine with me, I'm not promoting anything, I just put in there what I thought would fit for New Haven, and now it's up to, let me know, would you guys like, would you don't like, might add something, anything can be done at this stage.
I would like just to ask one question, just because of what we did tonight with the page two, item M, should we now add in that, the rentals?
We could, we could add that, yeah.
That way, going forward, it's all the same?
Yeah, we can add that too.
Anybody else you wanna read it, think about it? Yes.
Assuming that it's, doesn't change much in passes, whenever it happens, what does that do to current properties, are they gonna have to increase their standards with the landscaping? I mean, I, I can't.
No, it's gonna be a new development.
Okay.
It's only, everything stays, everything stays as is, no one's found anything, even if they wanna be changing the buildings, like change down the door, or window, do a roofing or something, it doesn't affect any maintenance items, I could actually add a statement in to that, it's just when you see a whole new development come in after we're gonna apply, it's, you know, whatever standards you decide.
Right, I was just asking because of our.
You may tell me, you know, say, you might.
Because of our sign ordinance, we were giving businesses five, seven years, or whatever it was, to.
Fifteen, no.
To, well, the ordinance has whatever it was, to bring their, their sign up, they're complying, I was just wondering if that's similar to applies to this.
That's a good thought, right now, with the ordinance, I'm just looking at it, it's generally just stay as is, when new development come in, then you get, or something does a major re, a, a major work at the property.
Based on that question then, if, um, do we have the ability to ask for upgrades? Because a lot of it's developed already with, you know, Dollar General's new, um, school adds a large parcel of the.
Yeah, I could do that.
Um, is there a way to bring those properties up to the standards that we're looking at as well?
Now, it's, it's, it's the difficult part, trying to force someone into taking a pre-existing site and forcing them to do that, I don't know, you said like use a carrot as approach, that's my own.
Yes.
Thought I like a carrot, I mean, you don't have any type of authority, a lot of places that do this have a downtown development authority, or else they have a corridor improvement authority, like for Brashett.
Yes.
And they have grants to help people out, assignment or landscaping, as they say, look, if you go this far, we'll match fifty percent up to five thousand dollars or something like that, but the village isn't quite there yet, this is like the first step, but it's something the village could consider at some point.
And that's the problem, I thought we were going with was a corridor improvement program.
And one of the thoughts we had, I break down with you, because things were coming in, we thought we could just get this going, so we catch new development when it comes in, and then we can look at the other thing you're getting to Rob, we can look at that.
Okay, and does this, is this going to include this type of consistency, like Main Street, or on our downtown area, so they have consistency to two areas?
Right now, this is just for the GBA, it's own GB, it's not even multiple family or anything, we can find this first step, the general business district, which is mostly Brashett Avenue, if you like making in there, we could always, it's always a big standard, we could add something like this to the downtown, I can give, do a deep dive into what's required, you know, what's required there or not.
Because I mean, we're talking about sidewalk sizes, we're talking about lighting, we're talking about making those things consistent, seems like it should drag up to the downtown, at least the downtown portion, be matching with Brashett, so it's a, we're only a mile, what, square?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. Is that a whole lot of place here?
No, it's easily doable, if you like, maybe we get to the next one, see what you like, and then we can start talking about transforming, it's just another, you get a hold off doing the public hearings and the adoptions, or you do it one time, one district at a time, whatever commission feels like it wants to do, we can make it happen.
I guess I would have a thought that do, do it all at once, because, say, you say, this place is crazy, I'm leaving tomorrow, and then we get another guy, and then his vision pops up from downtown, or, uh, I, I subscribe to the theory that I don't like to put off for the future, just like our sign order, fifteen years in the, you know what I mean?
You don't have to bet.
At least I have the now.
I could, what I could do is start pushing some of these, yeah, pushing standards into the downtown, see where it fits, at the same time, for the next month, you can look at this, see what you like or don't like, and then we just modify everything at one time, you let me know, you know what your preferences are.
Well, I think it's great, just like to do it all at once and have it consistent, so that whoever's next, wherever's next, it's already in place, and not reinventing the wheel somewhere else.
Good, anyone else?
No, it's great.
All right, uh, plan a report, you good, Dave?
I'm good.
All right, uh, public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, call from the table?
Oh.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
I'm just looking for some guidance from the, from the commission here, um, we've been receiving some complaints, again, we're making some headway on the, uh, the blanks in the, in the code of course in the village, uh, so something that's come up quite a few times over the last, we'll say month, are home occupations, uh, those that have a business within their residence that are causing, uh, a nuisance to their neighbors, uh, so I'm just looking for some guidance, um, sat down and, and had quite a conversation with Dave about this, so we're looking for some guidance on, on where really you want us to draw our line, um, there's, there's businesses that are operating, just for instance, um, landscaping businesses, uh, within the village that has their equipment up front, that may be loud in the morning, or, or just really, you know, cluttering up their, their lawn, so we're just really looking for, you know, what, how far do you really want us to, um, to enforce the, the home occupation, uh, or do you want us to kind of rewrite this to make it a little bit more, uh, specific, maybe forgiving, if you will, um, but we've just had someone submit through the last, the last month regarding this, we really don't have a lot of handle of it, so we're kind of here asking for your guidance, your wisdom, your knowledge of, of really, um, what to do.
So, Ron?
Is, what you, what you presented, is this what it currently is, or is it?
Correct, yeah, five one five dash one oh five is our current ordinance as it, as it stands now.
And so you're looking for guidance to beef it up, or lessen it to?
Right, you know, can we allow that landscaper to, to pull his, his trailer into his yard, um, maybe his snowplow to, to sit there, is that something that, realistically, does that, you know, is that, is that an eyesore, is it just a neighbor that may be annoyed, you know, and just, what, what is the guidance in which the, in the commission and, or the council would like us to, uh, proceed?
Yeah, I definitely, over the years, have heard complaints of, because especially at the hours, um, that someone's going to this home business, and it's early in the morning, and the voters are outside their bedroom, and it's six o'clock in the morning, and there's, you know, three, four, five cars, and, I mean, I've, I've heard these things over the years.
I mean, I would assume that's a daycare, and that's a mom dropping off their kid before going to work themselves.
No, that's not the only.
But.
But thus, thus, to your point, right?
Right.
There is a traffic, there is a, you know, that it can't be anything more than normal, you know, to your point, yes, but again, I, again, that's where do we draw that?
Right.
I did have a daycare here in the village, I had a guy with a large diesel truck pull up to my house, and yes, it vibrated the house, and, I mean, I told the guy to get off, you know, stop doing this to my neighbors, and he was our earliest guy at six o'clock in the morning, if it was, you know, my kids didn't like it, um, I'm just, that's what I'm, I'm saying is.
I mean, I personally would like.
I think there's rejection plates out there.
I would like to see it rewritten, have it a little tighter, with, um, hours of operation, storage safety, like fuel, um, depending on what they're, they're doing there, um, more of a limited traffic number, I do know that there's a lot of complaints about the one house, they get lines down the street sometimes, you know, I don't know how you enforce limited traffic though, but maybe that's. And would the other home occupay, occupancy, um, ordinances at other municipalities?
We would not. Years ago, there was a, a guy in a Rooney Sub with a lawn business, and he would bring all his grass back at night, until he took it to the compost yard, and it reaped into these people's houses, um, and at that time, we tried to work something out with him, and he just got more angry and did it more.
I do have a question though, of the complaints you mentioned, how many of them are in associations? And are the associations following up with them? Because they might have.
I have one.
Okay.
Could you give us a sample of what you're running into?
I'm sorry, what I'm, I'm looking.
Can you give us a sample of what you're running into?
Um, landscaping business, I don't know if I can, so exactly.
Generic.
Generically, uh, equipment outside, trailers, backhoes, you know, right next to another house that's not too far away.
Visible from the street.
Visible from the street, um, it, it's, a lot of it is, is landscaping businesses, um, there, there is another one that, uh, we're currently in conversation with now that fall under the hazardous and explosive materials, uh, so we're trying to work through that as we speak, so, but majority of it is, is the landscaping businesses.
Chief, do you want to mention about the signage as well?
The signage, right, um, we've, we've issued, um, two violations in recent, uh, memory about signs, right, so it says here, one square foot, and not one, very big, um, that they have since removed, um, but again, I'm sure they're still operating, um, so I just need some guidance, right, what, what's the commission, or the council, you know, are they going, you know, what is it that they want us to do, where's the line that they want us to draw, um, I kind of agree with, with Janet, I think it may need to be rewritten a little bit.
And this feels very generic.
I will add.
I was saying it needs to be strengthened.
Yeah, I will add to, as, because, is that with the safety hazards, if someone has brought that forward, and we've looked the other way, and we have an ordinance that says we shouldn't be looking the other way, and there's ever a problem in an adjacent property, then that's gonna fall on us.
Makes the village wonderful.
So, I feel like.
Right, life safety is one thing, right?
Yeah.
Life safety is something we can deal with all together, but, you know, it's.
Right, yeah.
Right, that's, you know, it's the trailers, the tractors, and the lawn mowers, and the.
Right.
Grass, the, you know, what I have, but life safety issues, yeah, we would tackle that in a, in a totally different manner.
And I don't want objectively to discuss it all.
But, in a way, right, that's why we're just trying to, you know, get the, the opinion of the, of the commission here.
I put my equipment in the garage every night.
We're talking about trailers, but. Right, and it's very specific, right, but if you own a whole occupant, uh, occupation, that you are the only employee, which, that is not always the case, um, so that's, you know, very specific, so at what point does it stop being a residence, and it starts being a business?
I guess that's what he's asking.
Right, that's.
I'm just talking, just talking alouds, because.
Dave, do you have similar, like, ordinances and other?
Oh, yeah, I can help you in tomorrow, we, we can talk all the time, I can help you look at other ordinances, but yours is pretty close, most of them, do you usually deal with lighting, sign, no signage, they deal with, um, track, how many cars can come to the house per day, uh, slot kinders, the square footage for the house, you can't have , you know, ten percent of your habitable part of your house can be used for an office or anything, so, the idea is to keep, you wanna run your own business, fine, but you're not gonna bother everybody else in the neighborhood by having people parking, the only, uh, daycare, I think with childcare, you're gonna have to, that's gonna fall into something different, because that's regulated by state zoning law, and they got certain requirements, so it's not gonna fall in a home occupation, these are, because it's got a whole separate requirement, but these could be the people that might want to act on the business side of their house, um, like I wonder sometimes people, they wanna do, a, a, once in a while you get somebody that does baked, God, I went to another place last year, they did baked goods in the basement, and then someone else ran them out, you had to check them, and then, the only reason they did is they started selling the baked goods on the front porch by putting things up, and they're, so wait a minute, this is, this is not, no, and, so we had to get them back in, make sure they fit better, and the other thing is to bring folks out to get them, to get certified, and get in front of zoning, because they have to check in like the baked goods person, didn't have anybody from heating, or plumbing, or electrical, check into there, holy crap, something went out in their basement, and went up, they would take out, who knows what it would take out, I mean, the end of that , there are examples of the dangers in that.
In the health department?
Yeah, I don't know how much you can get, twenty, yeah, the health department could come in in some cases, yes, yeah, and so, I think we, it's usually people have packets put together for home based business, you're gonna follow rules, if you don't wanna follow our rules, then you won't get, in a business district, you won't get a place where you're supposed to be there.
Lucy, what's the definition for insurance, I don't know.
Um, when it comes to like vehicles and property, you, you, they've always said that any, the equipment should be anything that would be.
that any, the equipment should be anything that would be applicable or used for the property itself.
And that is actually in the ordinance, yes.
You know, not.
Yeah, maybe we just limit the number of business, commercial vehicles they can store on their property. Like, you can have one, like, if you're a lawn mower guy, you can have your one, but you can't have, uh, just as an idea, you can't have 10, you can't have two.
But you could have a backhoe.
Which, well, I mean, yeah.
You could.
We could've, could've, could've. So.
I think it just gets later on, you know, there's a time period.
And then that's could be something that we could maybe put in here, so I think the general consensus is that we'll work on this, we'll bring it back, and then, uh, we'll go from there. Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh, anybody else?
I do.
Uh, call from the table.
Um, I appreciate everybody's, uh, vote for, um, chair. I'm gonna say this, that Jen has seventeen years of municipal experience here in this village, she has fifteen years of planning commission experience, her institutional knowledge is just beyond basically anybody that else is here. No one's been here longer than Jen Ratic, in the building department, in heck the village. We don't even have a fifteen, we have an on-off guy, but he's a councilman, and that's not, you know, we got two people that have this knowledge. And I think that the request that was made, one, was, was way under par. And, um, to address the comment of not having a chairperson that is in depth, as what we have enjoyed here, is this whole village runs on the generosity of everyone. We have a president that if we divided the amount of hours he put into his pay here, he'd probably be making minimum wage for $19.85, probably $3.35 an hour, just maybe less. This, everything isn't the norm here in the village, because, one, we got great people that are willing to do these things. I think that $75 a month for the things that she does is well beyond, um, slave labor. If you wanted to divide her hours and her knowledge, well, she'd probably make it $0.50. Again, I respect what, um, position, but I'm not gonna give all that free time and dedication and labor to it, to be honest with you. I'm gonna treat it like it wants to be treated by the village rulers. And I think that that's gonna hurt every single person in this village, I think it's gonna hurt us as a body, um, I think it handicaps Sirmede and, um, Dave by not having that there. Again, I brought it up here, I think 60 bucks for a meeting here is, again, charity, especially when you drag yourself all over the village researching, and, um, and the thing is, years ago, it was paid more. The downturn came, and this position went down. When the downturn went away, this position did not go back up, uh, for just a commissioner. I, I think that some serious looking at this position needs to be reviewed, and I don't think, um, I think it's a bad decision, I think it was a short sighted. And I think even her request, um, would probably be 60 bucks a month, sorry, but unacceptable as well. It's, I thank you so very much for all the effort that you've put into this village, and not just this position, but everything else you've done over the years, and I, I really feel like it was a slap in the face, and I don't think her request was about money as much as it was a little respect. And I wholeheartedly want to give you mine, and you deserve every ounce of it. And I think everybody here appreciates that as well, because we as a body would not be as strong as we are without her as chair. Again, thank you, but I am not gonna be what she was. And, and I guess that's what the village wants at this point, but I think you guys should really look at it together. And, um, I'd like to give her a big round of applause. Thank you, Jen, and that's all I got.
And I'm going to, if I can not cry about this, piggyback to that, to say, my intention of backing out of this position is to stand before council and make sure he gets paid what he deserves, because I do hope that he will do the same thing that I did, and I cannot do that sitting here in this chair, because I will not advocate for pay for me, but I will advocate for pay for him, just as I did in the past with our parks and rec department, who also went unpaid. The reason they get paid today is because I stepped down and I advocated for their pay, so I'll advocate for his pay as well. That's it. And Dave is a great planner.
Hey.
Goes without saying. You were, you were really involved in that earlier combo, so, Sirmede is also awesome, and us Dan, and honestly, you know, while we're sitting here and giving people, you know, the reason I've been working so many hours is because of Dan. And Dan, yes! Dan has, it is a true story, and also, you know, has done a huge, and for people that may not know, has done so much to bring so many things, it's why we're so busy, it's why we're so crazy right now, is because he and his department have gone out there and found the things that are problematic and brought them here, and that's why everything is just so much, and, uh, I think he's doing a great job, so, kudos to Dan.
Say Soreda, too.
Soreda, Soreda. Okay, anybody else on public comments, or paper comments? Okay, motion to adjourn at 8:30.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.